My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask you if you remain spending this passionately up in the office that we lost a dear friend, Jean Frankie, who was not only a PTA president for many years, but also the president of the North End Civic Association. And once she stopped doing that, she was on the side of those meetings for many, many years. So welcome to get to Village Hall. We will have a little bit of this tonight. We have a policy hearing, agenda goes through, then board reports. Then we'll open up to pressing comments for the audience. But before all of that, we have four new police officers that we would like to swear in. So make it official, Miss Walsh, can you please support the agenda?
Thank you, Mrs. Gerald. I would ask the board to appoint Thomas Nymane as a police officer in the 401 Police Department at contractual rate of fifty-four thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars, effective November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, on the first day that Nassau County Police Academy begins, and subject to Nassau County Civil Service Commission's eighteen-month probationary period.
I'm delighted to offer that resolution.
Best of luck, and I'll second it.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Trustee Humbanyah, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to appoint Robert Salasito as a police officer in the 401 Police Department at a contractual rate of fifty-four thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars, effective November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, on the first day that Nassau County Police Academy begins, and subject to Nassau County Civil Service Commission's eighteen-month probationary period.
I'll offer that resolution, best of luck, Robert, stay safe.
I'll second it with wishes for a safe, successful career.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Trustee Humbanyah, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to appoint James Encantolubao as a police officer in the 401 Police Department at a contractual rate of fifty-four thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars, effective November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, on the first day that Nassau County Police Academy begins, and subject to Nassau County Civil Service Commission's eighteen-month probationary period.
It's my pleasure to offer that resolution.
I'll second it, good luck, James.
Any discussion?
Trustee Humbanyah, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to appoint Michael Pintioli as a police officer in the 401 Police Department at a contractual rate of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, subject to Nassau County Civil Service Commission's eighteen-month probationary period.
I'll offer that resolution, congratulations, Michael, stay safe.
And I'm also very happy to second it.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Trustee Humbanyah, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
Seven, you're ready.
Second, I would ask the board to approve the motion of the board. Could raise your right hand if you'd have to make it. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear up all the Constitution of the United States,
Up all the Constitution of the United States,
Constitution of the State of New York,
Constitution of the State of New York,
The laws and orders of the Village of 401.
The laws and orders of the Village of 401.
I pray the promise,
I pray the promise,
execute the duties,
execute the duties,
a police officer,
a police officer,
in 401,
in 401,
to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability,
so help me God,
so help me God.
This evening we have pretty much the rest of our year. Great 401 Police Department. Please do appreciate the service and keeping us safe. It's very well invented. The next to the business is public hearing. The application of Robert Wilson of Twenty Nassau Street for call for special use permit under Chapter ninety-nine, allow extension of a one-story rear addition of a non-performing two-family house in an R1 district. So also can you read the legal notice?
Legal notice of public hearing incorporated Village of 401, New York. Notice here by committee and board of trustees of the Incorporated Village of 401, New York for public hearing and visit all of 401, 401, New York on Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at eight p.m. in relation to the following application. The application of Robert and Inc. Wilson of Twenty Nassau Street, 401, New York for special use permits under Chapter ninety-nine, Article seven, Section nineteen-nine dash forty-six to allow the extension of a one-story rear addition of a non-performing two-family house in an R1 district. This application is made in accordance with Article seven, Section ninety-nine dash forty-six of the zoning ordinance of the Incorporated Village of 401, New York, which requires that any one or extension of a non-performing use may only be authorized if they special use after public hearing. The structure, which says special perimis applies, is situated on the west side of Nassau Street at the southwest corner of Nassau and Matanoya Avenue, and is known as Twenty Nassau Street, Section thirty-two, Block two fifty-one, and Lot thirty-seven dash forty on the Nassau County tax map. A copy of the application is on file in the Office of the Village Clerk, One Four Holdout, 401, New York, and in the Yaxton. By any persons interested therein during business hours Monday to Friday inclusive, except legal holidays from eight thirty to four thirty p.m. Now it's a notice that all parties of interest and citizens will be given the opportunity to be heard at the force and time and place by Board of Trustees Incorporated Village of 401, New York, Susan Walsh, Village Clerk, in the state of November fourth, twenty twenty-two. And legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of 401, New York, and posted in accordance with law.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I have placed on the record that the application is previously filed and had the name of the service indicated already, and two hundred and thirty degrees of the volume had been served with notice.
And then I would ask the board to determine that the application by Robert Inc. Wilson, owner of Twenty Nassau Street, to allow the extension of a one rear, one-story rear addition of a non-performing two-family house in an R1 district is a type-two action and does not have a significant effect on the environment as defined by CEPR.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh, upon the board's signature?
Trustee Humbanyah, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
Thank you. See that Mr. McGarry is here to make his review of the application and if they've sworn in by the, so.
You swear firm testimony about to give me the true ownership of the property?
Yes.
Name and address of this?
Mary Ann Purgar, V. Victory, E. R. G. A. R. A., two hundred Jericho Turnpike, 401, New York.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. First of all, housekeeping, if you would refer to Form A1, you will note that the room adjacent to the bathroom is listed or labeled as a living room. That is incorrect. That is a kitchen. It also notes that it appears that a dining room has a partition separating from the rest of the house. That is also incorrect, please hold it. Wilsons have owned their home since nineteen eighty-five, and at that time, the second kitchen was located in what is now a bedroom that is directly adjacent to the bathroom on the second floor. At one point, the Wilson's son and his wife lived on the second floor. After they left, the kitchen was removed. And since it is their intention to rent the second floor, the Wilsons are now proposing to reinstall the kitchen and expand living space by adding a one-story structure we use as a bedroom. Proposed bedroom is completed, excuse me. Proposed bedroom will be located on the northeast side of the premises and measures approximately tall by fifteen feet and is compliant with zoning. Do you have any questions in the house?
Sure, thank you for coming in. I just have one question, I just want to put on record that the owner could confirm that they understand that it will still be taxed as a two-family home. Yes, here. You got it. It's still on the books, so I would say there's a doubt.
Robert Wilson, Twenty Nassau Street, 401.
Let me just read it. You swear firm testimony about to give me the true ownership of the property?
Yes.
And your name and address.
Robert Wilson, Twenty Nassau Street, 401.
Thank you.
Did you get the question?
Yes.
So yeah, I understand that it's only taxes if you can. Okay.
Any questions from the four trustees?
I think I may have misheard something, so I just want to... Did you say what you planned on putting the kitchen back?
Did he upstairs actually get to?
Right now, as part of this plan?
As part of the application to the building property, as long as we receive approval on the expansion of the first floor, yes, we will be using for the second floor kitchen back.
And then you would rent the second floor in the middle?
Right.
You would let Robert swear that the second floor?
Right.
Any questions?
So, just to clarify, this is going to be used as a two-family?
Yes.
President of the board?
I don't know.
Okay.
Mr. Fairness, we're going to correct these drawings to reflect what it should be?
Yes.
You have a seat for one more, students.
Just for the record, Mr. Brian, we indicated what is there now. So that's the reason why the second floor kitchen wasn't shown. We have to do a record. We indicated what is there now. And that's the reason why the second floor kitchen wasn't shown, but we will indicate it for the record.
Is there anyone here in Village Hall who would like to comment on this application? Seeing none. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to comment on this application? Raise your hands, I'll leave them. Any further questions from the board?
I would... We need to re... The added floor plan on drawing A1 just says, "Hockey bright," was in.
It's not a private space, it's no... No, it's a room. This also uses as a music room, as an engine, or whatever.
So it's just a little space. I think I just was more concerned, I didn't know what the term. I mean, I know what hockey bright means, but in terms of your industry. So it's a little space, okay?
Yeah?
I don't have any questions.
If I could ask the board for motion to reserve decision and close the conference.
Second.
Ms. Walsh, you want to vote?
Trustee Humbanyah, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
Thank you. Before we have all of this work, yeah. Let's move the rest of the agenda. Is there anyone here in Village Hall or on Zoom that has any questions, comments on items in our meeting? Seeing none, Ms. Walsh, can you continue? We'll see you later.
Yes, thank you, ma'am Cheryl. I would ask the board to approve public hearing minutes of seventy-five Cobbett Avenue and the regular quarter of the season that is both held on Tuesday, November first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion's carried.
I would ask the board to approve the scheduled accounts payable as follows. General fund, eight hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Full fund, thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Capital fund, sixty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and fourteen cents. total of nine hundred sixteen thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Trustee Humbanyah, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to either approve or renovate the request to use public facilities, subject to received certificate of insurance of CDC and Department of Health, nine months as presented.
I'll offer that resolution.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion's carried.
I would ask the board to approve the interview and permanent status as the position of mechanic paid at contractual rate of fifty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars, since he successfully completed his six-month probationary period as an event sec in twenty twenty-two.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Trustee Humbanyah, aye. Trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize parking within for two hours temporarily in the Spooner Street parking lot with the exception of parking permit holders until the parking kiosks are installed and approved.
I'll offer that resolution.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Trustee Humbanyah, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to grant the application for this special use permit for Seventy-five Cobbett Avenue, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the decision and disengagement.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Trustee Humbanyah, aye. Trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the purchase of one fire comfort chart and apparatus from Neville Fleet Service from HJ Cooperative Contracted in an amount not to exceed one million one hundred four thousand three hundred and nine dollars, and to authorize the makeup of village administrative timeset proposal.
I'll offer that resolution with thanks to the Ad-Hoc Committee and the Chief's Office for their diligent research in this, for this project.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh?
Trustee Humbanyah, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, trustee Longbody, and ma'am Cheryl.
Aye.
That will be your name.
Thank you very much. And we will now move to board votes, and we will start with Deputy Mayor, Dr. Linder.
Thank you. Continuing with our fire department to my fellow trustees, Claire, thank you for allowing me to work with the group of the duck. I know you appreciate it and well, well used by our fire department. We thank the fire department for the chiefs, officers, and members extraordinary volunteers in the service. The month of September included one hundred twenty-five calls for service, ninety-nine incidents calls and twelve mutual aids to emergencies, mostly fires in other communities. In addition to the department's many hours of direct service to cover, our 401 department spends a great deal of time on important and ongoing training for the leadership and/or the members this training is offered. In recent months, this has included strategies and tactics for large-scale incidents, which is soundly going to be more important, shaping today's fire departments for today's expectations, introduction to fire officer, a sixteen-week series of training which firefighters all participated in, carbon monoxide and air monitoring, fire behavior and arse awareness, and an upcoming December department drill conducted in conjunction and partnership with National Grid on responding to S emergencies. Obviously, that topic is greatly important. Our chief staff members are also investigating the latest equipment and methods used to extinguish electric vehicle fires, including special blankets and hose positioning which can attack the fire from underneath the vehicle. Our fire department will continue to work with other departments and agencies, including Nassau County Fire Marshal's Office, to stay ahead of the rapidly changing best practices in fighting EV or electric vehicle fires. When the department comes to work, the pavement of Spooner Street has been completed and passed the Spooner Parking Lock. There were several items in the parking locks now on the punch list for several adjustments. Beautiful new trees selected by owner callers from lists of trees with power lines on the same side of the street and those with power lines on the other side are currently being planted to add the green we all love in those streets. New trees are also available to be planted early December. If you'd like a new tree, please call the DPW at five one six six three... Five one six three two six six three two six oh. That's right, number nine street. Five one six three two six three six two oh. Yes. For, um, for our conservation society. Now, our Sentinel Garden season is coming to an end. Gardens will close for the winter at the end of Thanksgiving. Sunday, November twenty-seventh, taking the end. Thanks to so many for a perfect spring and summer full season at our gardens. We'll spotlight our garden's twenty-twenty-two highlights and heroes from the gardens in future full reports. November has been the time for very special gardens activities, especially for our children. Our gardening for kids program under the loving direction of FPCS Chair Mrs. Barra Trentacost has had a wonderful season. Last Saturday, forty to fifty family members delight in the garden's family tour led by our very talented board, Antipas, and Children's Library, Kathy Badal. Stops to the Girl Scout Century Garden, the Giving Garden, producing food for those in need, the strawberry and blueberry gardens, the colorful Birdtown mural designed and painted by our artist, Liliana Espinoza, and many other attractions. A fun afternoon ended as families used colorful recyclable materials to create further theaters and fill their winter season. Remember to feed the birds who visit your home during the cold winter months. It's very glad time to do that. We thank everybody. Chambers of Congress, and our businesses, the holiday season is here. Please celebrate with us in our 401 store and our business districts. You can start your window shopping and get purchases on Small Business Saturday, just two days after Thanksgiving on November twenty-sixth. Remember, there are no Village Park meters where you can shop and after local. Then enjoy the festivities of the 401 Chamber of Commerce, 401 Chamber Women's Club, Village of 401 and Hollywood Victory Tree Lightning Festival and Shopping Village, starting at five p.m. on Friday evening, December second, Tree Lightning at six p.m. And do it again at Cobbett Avenue Chamber and Village of Stewart and Tree Lightning Festival, complete with horse above rides and other holiday treats on Saturday afternoon, December tenth, at four p.m. And for 401 musicians. Congratulations to the 401 marching band who placed third in the New York State Marching Band Competition in Syracuse this past weekend. The band broke a school and district record for a competitive marching band, scored and received enthusiastic, great night welcome back to 401 from fans, families, and our police and firefighters. Again, congratulations to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Humbanyah. Trustee Chiara?
Thank you, ma'am. For the Village of Hall, we just had the new two construction updates. The hockey multi-purpose ring construction project is underway. Expect to see concrete trucks next week to start the new brick construction, structure. The completion of this project private the week, early in, early in spring. The library, the library entrance ring construction project will start next week. The front entrance door will be closed during the construction period. All entry and exiting must be, must take place at the back entrance door. The completion of this project is also expected early next spring for our police department. As reminded, a daylight saving time upon us is getting early, is getting dealt much earlier. So please drive safely and keep an eye out for our children and other residents moving through our community. At many of our civics meetings, we often hear about speeding, failing to stop at stop signs, and many various traffic violations. Quite often, when enforcement occurs, residents summon defenders. So once again, to avoid any unfortunate incidents, please obey traffic regulations and drive safely throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Chiara. Trustee Stewart?
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for coming. I would like to start this evening by offering my condolences to the Frankie family. Jean Frankie was on the board of the Northern Civic Association when I joined in nineteen eighty-eight. I was honored to serve on that board for many years as people like Jean Frankie that have a heart and soul of many volunteer organizations here in the Village of 401. I would like to welcome our newest police officers. I would like to welcome our newest police officers to their new to their new positions to to sway them in. I wish them long, safe, successful careers here in the village. For the Recreation Center, many residents are enjoying their new pickled courts on the old courts day and sea. It's wonderful to see so many people out there enjoying themselves. People are playing pickle court on the other old courts because, as Trustee Chiara mentioned, the brick construction is in full swing. Our fields remain open. Please be aware of your surroundings and do not go beyond the construction fencing. Beginning yesterday, the fourteenth lines of the Recreation Center, all fields remain open until Sunday, December fourth. Due to this construction, there will be no Recreation Center Tree Lighting this year. I'm looking forward to seeing all of you at the Village Tree Lighting on the second and the Chamber Tree Lighting in Covet Avenue on tenth. For the long hour and three T.C., this past weekend, the Heaviside Line was inoperable due to a planned outage of the railroad consol switch that will let trains to move on off the Heaviside Ranch to and from the main line. Last week, much maintenance work could be seen underneath the station as well as under the tracks of the railroad, clean under the state under the tracks and reinforce their pigeon netting under the trestles. For the Towne Street Town, the MTA maintains that they must have the killer access of the site. The third track project is what is called a design balance, meaning that as things come up, they design it with unbroken communities who won't be part of struggling to mitigate concerns of residents in the village. Village residents, village officials are meeting with representatives from the railroad later this week to discuss upcoming repair work at the Floe Park Station. We are hoping to hear some very positive news about the fixes coming to our station at this early morning meeting. As always, residents are encouraged to reach out directly to the MTA with questions and concerns, as we found this the most effective way for residents to communicate with the MTA. They can be reached at www/contact.nta.info slash customer dash feedback or by phone at five one six two zero three four nine five five. If anyone wants to email me at chasestewart@fpvillage.org, I'd be happy to send that information over to you. It's a lot verbally. There isn't a way to answer this one, but you can ask for more options and then ask for comments and concerns, and you will eventually get to a person. And also encouraging to attend civic association meetings where you can hear local and village news first thing.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. Trustee Longbody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Floe Park Library, the construct, as you heard before, the construction upgrades have started on the new AD ramp, the front entrance, and shortly on the new roof. Please pay attention to the signs and directions as the upgrading work continues. Visitors will need to enter through the rear entrance located in the parking lot at this time. When the ramp is completed, the bike racks and bushes will be returned to finish off the front. November's Food for Fine is on. The library away fines up to five hours in exchange for non-perishable foods to be donated to the food pantry is a great way to clear your account and help another great service in our village. Some upcoming events and classes include Empire Council, Defensive Drive on December eighth, English Language Letter Class, November twenty-sixth, Boy Scout Troop Forty-two, wreath fundraiser on Saturday, November twenty-sixth, on the library lawn. Tuesday, November twenty-ninth at seven P.M., the Representative Club Score, councils to small businesses will offer ideas and information for small businesses on how to utilize social media to grow your small business. Wednesday, November thirty, the Heaviside Town Clerk, mobile passport van will meet the library from ten P.M. to two P.M. This is a great convenient way to apply or renew your passport. Is by appointment or lease, please call five one six eight one two three one zero zero to set up the time. The library is closed Thursday, November twenty-fourth for Thanksgiving. Details on these and many other events are listed on the library website, www.floeeparklibrary.org. For Four Village Studios, we have some wonderful breaking news from our studio. At the 2022 Alliance for Community Media Northeast Regional Video Festival, Four Village Studio won four awards. Congratulations to all the award recipients, and our winners are: First place in the historical documentary category, The Antique Road Test Number Twenty-Three, producer Walter Gosling and Johnson Limmer. First place in the general talk show, Uncork Number Twenty-Five, Marty LaVey Maria, producer Lex Wicker. Second place in municipal government programming category, our Floe Park Fire Department Alert Number Six, Emergency Medical Technology, producer Larry King, A.D.M.T. and Boba Smokey Firefighter. In third place in the community impact category, Floe Park Fire, Floe Park Police Department, Behind the Badge Number One, Surviving an Active Shooter, producer Lieutenant Will Darby. The honors to community media, college, community TV studios throughout the northeast New England region. Congratulations to all our winners and thank you to all our producers and our operations manager, Jim Green, for making Four Village Studios a great studio that it is. To watch this year's award winners and see a list of all our shows, please visit www.floeeparklibrary.org or watch a local provider station. I would like to wish all our neighbors and friends a very happy, healthy, safe Thanksgiving. It's a great time to be with family and friends and give thanks for all our blessings. And speaking of safety, for those of you that like to deep fry your turkeys next week, please be careful. Make sure they're the force and the dry. The deep fry is safe outdoors on a level surface and the oil is at the proper level and got overfilled. This helps to beat the fires and see these burns. These are delicious and a great way to make the turkey, but can be very dangerous if you don't follow directions and prepare it properly. And with that, to all appetito, enjoy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Longbody. Uh, double things from my report. With regards to the fire department, the Chief's Office recently approached the Village Board to explore with them the possibility of having a contracted ambulance service to the village. We are beginning from investigative stage. There have been no decisions made, and there are a number of questions along with the requisite significant due diligence that needs to be performed by various parties, including the Village Board. We will endeavor to keep all to date with regards to the need for the details of how this may work and then determine to move forward. Separately, last night, Trustee Chiara and myself had the pleasure of attending our school board meeting with we were the last in a series of civic presentations that the school board asked for. First was the fire department in September.
First was police.
No, first of police in September, then our fire department, and then last night we wrapped up, we had a very attentive audience, gave them an explanation of the overview of the village, along with what's going on, and we had a number of good questions from attentive audience, both young and old. And with regards to young people, we do those board meetings once in a while, and it is amazing to see the work that the young people in the village are doing on a day in and day out. School board does a very good job of presenting that every meeting. I'd like to thank the school board for affording us the opportunity to further reach our residents on what we do here in the village and what a great place it is, how it's made, and such a privilege. Trustee Stewart mentioned civic associations. There were two of them on, I mean, two Thursday, right? At the Full Village. And I'd also like to thank Phil's father, Kachi, from Just the Facts Media. I think I saw Brian Duffy on, he is on Zoom, on Nicely Media for covering us as always. And lastly, from myself, my family, the entire Village Board and their families, and the entire village, have a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving and enjoy. And I'd like to ask for a motion to call Ms. Walsh on the podium.
So, happy Thanksgiving to all.
Happy Thanksgiving, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now I'd like to open up for questions, comments, and remarks that are here in this hall. Sure.
I'm a visual person, I need to see.
Sure. How are you this evening?
Hi, I'm Donna Albiado, and I live at fifty-four North Tyson Avenue. He used to be neighbor.
Yes.
I'm sure. and Hope. Albiado.
Thank you.
I have a problem. My house is situated in Queens and Nassau. So it's causing a big issue as far as parking and enforcement in front of my house. When I moved in in 2013, there were meters down the block, and there was also a line down the middle of the street diagonally showing where Nassau started and where Queens started. And it was kind of easy for people to see.
Was it a beige line or was it a moss line?
It was a beige. It was a totally different color, beige and some gold colors. And it was a cute story to tell people, oh, you know, sign over there. And I believe it was Mike Lambor, who then told me, there's two fire items. I showed the last picture, there's two fire items, one on the Queens side and one on the Nassau side. And being a newbie on the block, I wasn't sure where I could park or what, so he explained, oh, you just follow the fire items. One side is Nassau, one side is Queens. He made it very easy. One of the parking meters were down the end of the block. There's an office building at the corner, and there's also the Verizon building. The people would park in front of my house and squeeze so they would be on one side of my door, thinking they were in Queens. But they're all in Nassau. You see the map I gave you, the whole front of my house and even a piece of my neighbor's house are Nassau. Now, we compounded it even worse this year. Well, last eighteen months ago, the city of New York, in their infinite wisdom, decided to pave the street, and I guess they thought they would do us a favor because they then broke the pavement past my house. And you'll see in one of those pictures, a line exactly where the pavement is now. Everybody on my side of the street have Queens addresses. So people drive down the block and they see all these Queens addresses, and there I am, the last house next to the Verizon building, and they go, oh, this is Queens, and they park there, reinforced by the fact that there's a sign right there that says four hour parking and the pavement now. I have called numerous times for enforcement. Two weeks ago, I saw a police car make a circle and then another one. I went out and he was talking to my neighbor across the street. And I said, well, why didn't we want these copies? And he said, oh, no, we only do the Village of Floe Park. You're not in the Village of Floe Park. I said, but I am. See, my address is fifty-four North Tyson. He said, well, we were told not to do on that side of the sign, we have to do on the other side of the sign, which is, my daughter said this to me, I said, no, that can't be. But because of the pavement where it is and the sign where it is, the enforcement thinks that my house is Queens. So I constantly have people in front of my house, day and night. There's a picture there of a red van, and if you look very carefully, it has foggy windows. And that picture was taken at seven thirty-eight. He was there three days. He gets very, they get very close to my driveway, and it's a hazard pulling out because I have a hard time, I have to sneak out slowly. If you know North Tyson or even South Tyson, they think it's a speedway. So I, if they get that close to my driveway, it's a big van, and I have a hard time getting down my car. What I really, the last time I spoke to somebody, the dispatcher, she said to me that I should speak to the Department of Public Works and have them put the sign right where Nassau starts, which would be kind of grassy part of my neighbor's property. I don't think I can just call the Department of Public Works and say, you should put a sign there. So I'm hoping you guys and women could help me train the police force, because this police officer was arguing with me that I was not in Nassau. I can show you my tax bills, the bill that I'm in Nassau. I pay taxes in Nassau and Queens.
I can speak to that. Because our general supervisor, Ken Pierceall, came to me, the police informed him, the DPW, and I pulled out all the surveys, we did identify the line, your pure threat, and they are going to move that sign, so it's on exactly the Nassau side. So we're taking care of it.
All right, that is great. I really appreciate that. I feel like I don't like, want to be a pain. I call up all the time, and I can tell that they're saying, it's harder again.
No, it's okay.
And I don't want to be a pain. I don't like to be a pain.
I'll give this to Lieutenant, Lieutenant Field.
Yeah, we'll just make sure that.
Everyone understands the issue.
Yeah, we're aware, but I think what the problem is, is that we can't write the ticket that the sign is in the wrong place, because then what ends up happening is the person that's going off there, they just say, oh, the sign is up this way. You know, I park on this side of the sign. And even if, even if they're correct that the line is the correct place, they come up to court, that's just going to be dismissed, because they'll just say that the sign was in the right place. So it's.
So we'll get the sign wrote, and once it's pulled with the police, we'll be in enforcement, we'll make sure this gets to all the officers.
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much. I really, really appreciate it.
Don't hesitate to call it in.
I, I know, I understand. Thank you again. Be helpful.
Thank you for writing the documents.
Yeah.
Very, very.
Visualize very easily.
I'm a visual person, I need to see.
Yeah.
So thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustee, officers, and community. My name is Sharon Erby Davis, Erby Davis, E.R.B.I.S., and I'm a resident of South Floe Park, two-two-seven Locat Avenue. I'm also the crazy crossing guard in front of Swan High School. So maybe y'all can do that. Me. I'm here this evening.
You do a great job, by the way.
Sir?
I said you do a great job.
I try. I'm here this evening because I have written the town of Hempstead because I didn't know the boundaries of Tulabavno, east and west, from Gilmore to Landau, because there's no school marking over there. And I got a letter back from town Hempstead that they would look into it. I asked, I asked邻居 Salages, and she looked into it for me and said that this is a part of Floe Park property. So I said, let me come tonight to find out if in fact it is, so that I could ask about the mark.
So yeah, so we got to respond, but the Village with us right there, if you could fill us in where we all.
Yes, we discussed at the last board meeting, we spoke with something with Salages' office, Amanda from our office, and we discussed last board meeting, have that speed zone installed. Just actually, following up with the tenant, Tom Reed, who's inspector on that documentation we see, he's not in, he can have, but as to how do we proceed to get that done, I think the intention is to get that speed zone put in as you requested, and as something with Salages' office has asked us to see if we could do that.
Thank you, sir. I just want to get that done. I've been with you four years, and it's like, if you were talking about the speed, it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you reach out to the town of Hempstead for the safety of the students that you brought over here?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
That is so honorable.
I was a child in Hempstead, office attorney, town of Hempstead, and the town of Hempstead, they all.
Thank you so much for looking after our children.
Yes, ma'am. And I would also like to get to that if I could, because I live in the neighborhood right behind Swan, so I'm on toward you and to all the time. I'm also an educator. I've watched you in action, God bless you. You do amazing things at that corner, given the layout of the corner, the many directions traffic is coming from the turn lanes, the arrows, and what is it, about eighteen hundred Swan High students, most of which cross there. I echo Trustee Stewart's comments. Thank you very, very much, because you have one of the most challenging corners I have ever seen. I really appreciate your taking on that challenge and handling it in such an expert manner. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Anyone else here, Village Ball? Anyone on Zoom? So you want to be joined, is that what?
No.
Oh, yes.